The meeting. My name is John Frank. I am the Vice Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. Six AM on, six PM, not six AM. Six PM on Thursday, October 17th, 2024, we are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, commonly known as the open meeting law. Pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 30, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio devices by Fall River Government TV. If anyone desires to make an audio or video combination recording thereof, please notify me now and we shall make a public announcement of your intentions. Okay. Present this evening are permanent members, James Cawkins, alternate member Alexis Ansamo, permanent member Dan Dupere, and Rick Sahadon. Also in attendance are clerk Patty Aguirre and Director of Planning for the City of Fall River, Dan Aguirre. Patty, have all petitions for this meeting this evening that are up to be considered, have been properly advertised, and all interested parties been notified according to the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, as amended.
Yes.
I declare the October 17th, 2024 meeting regularly scheduled for this evening to be open. I remind all persons presenting before this board, including petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to a petition, that the presentation should be limited to no more than three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chair. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claims. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for their petition. I hereby advise any petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the Ordinance of the City of Fall River. Additionally, permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development or the use of which subject. Oh, lost that one. And/or use which is subject to the position before the Zoning Board of Appeals this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing department are competent in the discharge of their duties of clerks. However, they are not lawyers and they do not give legal advice. The actions taken by this board have real and lasting effect upon the title of your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek legal competent, legal counsel before filing your petition and after the decision of the board has been made. For example, there's a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan review. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority and that you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinance. The newly adopted city charter, Section 918, mandates that all municipal member body develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides citizen input on the zoning board's specific matters at the end of the meeting. A sign-up sheet is in the table in the rear of the room. Finally, I disclose that an official copy of the zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office and can also be found online. One cannot rely specifically on the zoning ordinance and if you have any questions before we, does anyone have any questions before we begin? Okay, very good. We're going to start with number 01 from last month's meeting was brought forward. It's Rand Manor Holdings LLC, Attorney Peter Salino, 289 Bank Street, MAP N04, Lot 29.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Peter Salino. I'm a lawyer. My office is located at 550 Locust Street here in Fall River. I represent the applicant petitioner on this case and I'm going to make a motion to table this again. We've been unable to settle with the seller on the parking requirements of the board and how we divvy up that sort of oddly shapen parking lot on the west side of High Street. So therefore, I've brought with me the request to table form together with a check made payable to the city in the sum of 500 and I respectfully request the board grant this continuance.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move we grant the request to continue.
Second. 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 Okay. Alexis.
Yes.
Yes. James?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Chairman, yes.
Thank you. Can I pass this into the clerk?
Yes, thank you. Sally?
There you are.
You'll have the same amount of time.
Yep, that's it. Okay, new business. Item number one is S.D. Dreams LLC, care of attorney Mark Levin, 357 and 361 Montop Street, MAP G14, Lot 2.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the boards, good evening. I'm Attorney Mark L. Levin with law office at 138 Rock Street, Florida, Massachusetts. I represent the owner of the property, S.D. Dream LLC. My client has requested that we ask for a special permit pursuant to Section 86-423B to subdivide this property into two separate lots. Both homes were built before 1954. As typical in Fall River, these homes were built on one lot when there was no zoning. My client intends to divide the same into two lots, one to contain the two family and the contained the three family. A little different than many of these, my client will have parking for these properties. The back property will have two spaces plus the garage use and the front property will be creating two parking spaces that aren't there yet. So we believe that this is something that should be approved. My client understands that they need to separate utilities. In fact, have called me today to tell me they just hired a contractor to do the work so that we're hoping it can be done before the end of the winter. In one minute, I'll take care of it.
Can you just say that parking again?
Yeah.
It's not like you have four spaces.
Yeah, they're going to have three spaces. Well, one garage space and two spaces for the rear house and two parking spaces for the front house.
So we're looking at a total of five?
Five total. Right now, it's just use of a garage, but I told them that they really should put parking spaces in for the edification of the city and the street. And they agreed.
So there's already a curb cut. There's no?
There is curb cut already.
Members of the board, any questions? Dan?
I have nothing to add other than the standard conditions for any of these types of settlements.
Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Okay, members of the board, do we have a vote?
This is a bifurcation, right? A special permission?
It is. We will need a bifurcate here.
So I would move that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second. Okay. Moved and seconded. Rick?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
And Chairman, yes.
Thank you very much.
And on the, on the actual, the special permit itself?
The special permit be approved with the conditions, usual conditions such as, we've already mentioned separation of utilities.
Yes, and the affidavit that will be recorded within the year of the separation.
We also want to make sure no fencing on the property lines.
Right, yeah, the usual.
And a permanent boundary marker. These are the standard.
Like standard conditions.
I'm doing this for Patty's gratification. Yeah. So no fencing along the property lines, permanent boundary markers put in place, and site plan review.
Oh, there's no exterior work?
Utility, what?
Oh, utilities.
The utilities.
Okay, sorry.
Just, only anything you have to deal with is.
Contractor will do that. Thank you.
Okay, and so on the motion?
Second.
Yes.
Second.
Ricky, yes?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Frank, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Okay, item number two, Louis and Anna Cudaro, care of attorney Jeffrey Maderas, 368 Charles Street, MAP A02, Lot 41 and 57. Counsel?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Attorney Jeffrey Maderas with the law firm of Burke Esmond and O'Leary Van Colen located here in the city of Fall River. The petition that I bring forth today is a pretty basic one. It is the transfer of property from one neighbor to another. The next door neighbor at 388 was put in a, an offer to purchase property from his next door neighbor, which is at 368 Charles Street. The property had been previously subdivided by variance. I think it's part of the packet to build a single-family house on that lot and leave the other single-family home. However, the owners of that property, Mr. Cudaro, filed a plan and he filed a variance in 2007. He thought that's all he had to do. When I reviewed the title for the sale, I got an opinion from the zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Hathaway. He indicated that after going over the documentation, he felt that although they had recorded the plan, recorded the variance, they didn't actually act on it because they never deeded it to a third party, nor did they pull a building permit. So that's what brings us here today. The owner of 366 wants to transfer that same lot to 388. 388 wants to use it for parking. They already have their swimming pool on that lot, so they just want to add it to their yard.
Members of the board?
Just to make clear, non-buildable?
Right now, it's, it's non-buildable in 366 and when it goes to 368, it's going to be non-buildable. We're going to deed, we're going to deed it to the owners of 388. It's their intention right now just to make it as part of their yard.
So it's going to be deeded and combined?
And combined.
Combined. So on the A and R plan, it's going to show the removal of that interior outline between A257 and A252, so it will never stand alone. It'll be combined with?
It's going to be combined.
And no further subdivision?
I can't agree to no further subdivision.
No re-subdivision.
I, I really can't agree to that. It's, it's already been to a variance twice. Their current intention is to use it as part of their yard. I don't know what the, to limit their use in the future, I can't see not allowing them to come back for variance and let the board decide at that particular time.
What, the determination of it being a non-buildable lot, where did that come from?
It's, so it doesn't meet the current zoning requirements in an R.A. district.
Oh, okay.
So it was before the board, prior to 2007. In 2007, the variance that was recorded at Book 8794 said that they, the lot sizes were going to be 6,915 and 5,960, which is approximately what this lot is going to be. So it's just basically flip-flopping from one neighbor to the next. He's going to pay one tax bill. We're going to deed it into the husband and wife of 388 and we'll have the plan go on removing that, that line.
I have to ask, this is a variance, so we're looking for a hardship for dividing this?
So the hardship is basically the, of course, it's the shape or where the house was built. The best use of the property would be for somebody to use it as a yard. So you can see that the, the house when it was built was clearly offset to, I don't know if the, the lot that was originally there, when the zoning changed, that it merged with the previous lot and that's how the size and where the house was constructed. It's across the street from Sunset Hill. There are single-family houses in the area. So as I, as I explained, the person at 388 just wants to use it to make a bigger yard.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Dan?
No, because I understand that the relief being requested for is for the size of the lot, the side yard setback and lot coverage, which is currently conforming would then be a 62%. So that's generally the relita you are granting to allow this lot to be created around 368.
Or 388. So right now?
No, 368. The existing house is at 368.
The existing house is 368.
So that lot will now have lot coverage of 62%.
Right. So, and the reason why we're asking to waive sidelines and setbacks, because once this piece goes away, then the house is going to be non-conforming. So that's
Exactly. That's what I was going to say. The board just wanted them to understand what relief they're actually getting.
I apologize, Ms. Aguirre.
Okay. Anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Okay, members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, with the condition that it's a non-buildable lot, I would move that the variance be granted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Yeah, all right. Members of the board, Alexis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Chairman Frank, yes. Okay, all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three, R&amp;D Realty Trust, 1493 Meridian Street, MAP V05, Lot 22.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Ken Fiola Jr. I'm the Executive Vice President of Bristol County Economic Development Consultants. I'm here tonight on behalf of R&amp;D Realty Trust because they've had a conflict with scheduling, an unintended conflict, scheduling error. So they've asked me to appear before their behalf and actually advocate for the approval of their zoning petition. That's before you tonight. For the record, my office is at 139 South Main Street. So what you have tonight before you is a pretty straightforward variance request with the applicant is requesting a variance to subdivide the parcel into three lots. This is located along 1493 Meridian Street, MAP VO5, Lot 22. The existing single-family home will remain on a fully conforming lot. You can see that the lots that are being developed there are, the lot where the single-family home is, is 32,000-plus, which conforms to the zoning in that area. The additional two lots that are being created are 42,000-plus and 41,000-plus respectively. The applicant is seeking to construct two new residential homes on the lot, proposed lots number two as well as proposed lot number three, and that the applicant is seeking a waiver of frontage requirements for the two lots in the R30 zone. You can see that the, one of the lots has a frontage of 50 feet and the second lot has a frontage of 45 feet and the existing lot has 150 feet. Be happy to answer any questions. I should also say for the record that in addition to having the lots created, all three houses, right, currently the existing house is on a septic system. In the event that the petition is approved tonight, all three lots will be tying into the sewer system.
Members of the board, any questions? One minute, ma'am. We'll get to the audience.
Dan, why was this denied in the first place?
What wasn't denied?
Well, they're seeking a variance.
Correct.
Right.
For a lack of frontage.
Lack of frontage, that's all.
So when we looked at the way of doing this, because this is adjacent to the water department land that surrounds the reservoir, on that side of Meridian Street, we try to keep the development of subdivisions that are, that put in roadways, massive amount of pavement to get two or three of lots behind these larger parcels. The diminutive relief of frontage seems to be the better route to go with regards to hardship and having to deal with the implementation and what that would do to the environment of the amount of impervious area just for the roadway construction. Roadway construction doesn't go towards lot coverage. So however the road needs to get, a five hundred foot long road, to get the same number of lots just doesn't make sense. So the waiver of frontage only and we end up with larger lots than what zoning requires is an environmental benefit to the city and to the water department and our drinking supply.
But that was the only non-conforming?
The only relief is for frontage.
Yeah, all setback requirements would all remain, yeah.
Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed?
I'm not opposed, but I have a question.
Question, ma'am. Ma'am, we just need your name and your address for the report.
My name is Diana Maderas. I'm at 270 Book 333 and it's not even a study. I just wondered if you could see what you're looking at.
All right.
So we don't have the capability to do that this evening. Any plan that you want to see, we can definitely make?
We have, there's actually a large board on this one right here if you'd like. Okay, anyone else have any other questions? Very good. Members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the variance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Alexis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
And Chairman Frank, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number four.
Before we move on, hold on one second. Which, which petition are you interested in? I'll just give you a plan now if you want.
On five.
On five. We have extra copies of the plans.
There you go.
We want to take some time to go over.
Okay, item number four, I have Claudio Jaya?
Jaya.
Jaya, okay. Care of Jeffrey Tolman, 92 Omen Street, MAP F09, Lot 40.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants here on behalf of Claudio Jaya, the petitioner on this application. What we have here is a very unusual application before this board. We have a conforming lot with a conforming structure on it and they're proposing to put an addition that conforms to setbacks. So really, what we've done here is we filed for a special permit because of the increase in lot coverage that would go along with the additions that we're proposing on this to the existing single-family structure. There's an 80 square foot addition on the southeast corner, a 144 square foot addition on the northeast corner of the, of the building, of the dwelling, and then a 1,167 square foot, the main addition, which is off the back, the northwest part of the dwelling. In addition to the additions to the dwelling, we're also filed a special permit in order to raise the, the garage roof two feet. Currently, there's an eight-foot wall in the garage, but the way the site is graded, there's like two feet of fill going around the, the west side and the north side of it. So there's only like six-foot exposed wall. And it is kind of small. I have been inside the garage. The eight feet is kind of low. So the petitioner would just like the ability to raise that garage roof two feet. The garage itself is a non-conforming structure due to setback. It only has two feet to the side property line. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, the existing two-stall that's there now, that's, that's the addition. You're just looking for a two-foot height adjustment in that?
Correct. Yeah, the raised roof on that structure, two feet.
Okay. The exist, the new proposed two-store, two-stall addition is going to have living space above it?
I believe so, yes. Yes. The main purpose, the ground level is going to be a two-stall garage with living space above it, thus the expansion of the driveway. There's a 1,300 square foot expansion or extension to the north of the driveway. As a result of the additions and the extension to the driveway, the existing lot coverage, which is not conforming, it's just over the 30%, it's at 31%, will be increased to 50%.
So Jeff, as I understand, this is in an area that has flooding concerns in the past. How do you propose to mitigate the flooding?
Someone mind closing that back door, please. Thank you.
How do you propose to mitigate the flooding concerns in this area?
Well, all the, all the roof drains on the house will be connected to infiltration systems.
They'll all be connected, probably?
Yes. Yeah. Not just the additions on this one. If that is a concern, we'll certainly address that through site plan review and we'll propose to, I mean, we have the room to do it. We'll connect them all.
That would be subject to site plan, right, Dan?
Yes.
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 All right, thanks.
Sure.
And this is remaining a single family?
That's correct.
It's not an apartment going over the garage or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Dan?
The roofline on the existing garage, is the roofline staying and the whole thing just going up two feet? Or is there going to be a different roofline? Because the peak may change two feet, but the outside edges, is it just?
As far as I know, it's the same roofline.
The whole thing is going up two feet? Or are we going to go up 10 feet with a flat roof?
The way the owner explained it to me, it was just going to go.
So existing roofline is staying exactly the same?
Basically, yes.
You just raise two feet with what's there?
Correct.
Just make sure that's conditioned in a certain way, only because of its proximity to the abutting property and to raise that. The outside edges of the structure theoretically six feet might be an impediment to the neighboring properties. But as Ricky was alluding to, this is an area, Omen, Grinnell, Reeves, especially as we get down to the southerly part, southeally part of Reeves, is an area of extreme flooding all of the time. We receive phone calls all the time and Paul Furlan's office is inundated with complaints about drainage and flooding problems. So when we're asking for an increase in lot coverage, that's directly related to exasperating the existing drainage issues. So it would be my recommendation that all impervious surface be infiltrated into the, into the ground. And that could be a condition that you put on this to be monitored and approved through site plan review.
Okay. And what's the, oh, the lot coverage is going from 31 to 50?
Correct.
All right. And we could also, existing asphalt driveway to remain, we could also request a possibility of impervious?
You could if you wanted to, but it would make more sense just to require that the new driveway be made, rather than dig up an existing driveway.
No, no, no. I'm saying the new dri, that's what I was talking about. I'm sorry, the new driveway to be impervious.
You could go that route and, and the applicant has the ability to make that determination at site plan review.
Okay.
So if your condition is that all impervious surfaces get infiltrated, once they get the site plan review, if they propose pavers, that's no longer considered an impervious surface and it would not have to be infiltrated.
Okay.
So that gives them the flexibility of dealing with that at that point.
Okay. Any further questions? The audience, anyone in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Okay, members of the board, do we have a vote?
Could I just ask for one item of clarification? When you're saying that all impervious surfaces, are we talking about the existing driveway or not?
Yes.
We are? Okay.
All, all existing and proposed impervious surfaces.
Okay.
So this is bifurcated. So Part A, I would make the motion that it is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhoods.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a vote? Alexis?
Yes.
Jim? Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Frank, yes. Now on the special permit?
So my motion is that it would be approved with the conditions as delineated by Dan in, as opposed, in regards to the impervious drainage, that they all be infiltrated except if with site plan review, there's a, there's a, somehow there's not a problem, but there's an exception to that.
Yeah, that's just standard either impervious. So we either have impervious, even if it's considered 2% not impervious, that is not considered impervious. So pavers that have joints are not considered as being impervious.
But a site plan review, that would all be?
Yeah.
Yep. And also to remain a single-family home?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Second. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Alexis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Chairman Frank, yes. Okay, motion's granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five, we have Tetrel Real Estate LLC, care of attorney Peter Salino, 72 Belmont Street, MAP M24, Lot 7.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name
Good evening, again for the record, my name is Peter Salino, I'm a lawyer at five-fifty Locust Street in Fall River. The petition before you is being presented by me as counsel to Tetral Real Estate. To my left is Aaron Tetral, obviously to my right is Jeffrey Tolman, the engineer on the project. The proposal before you revolves around seventy-two Belmont Street here in Fall River. The proposal is to divide the lot into two lots, leaving the existing three-family structure and dilapidated barn on one lot and seeking a buildable lot. The plans indicate that the lot numbered two is completely conforming. And I've noted in my petition, and I just want to illustrate for the board that this was previously before the board and the division of the lot was approved in two thousand and sixteen and was not acted upon. The waivers associated with this petition include a waiver for use as a multifamily in a single-family zoning district. That relates to the barn. The poster board here in front of me is designed to illustrate what Mr. Tetral intends to do to the barn that is there. The proposal is to turn it into a three-apartment or multifamily consisting of three units. The proposal provides sufficient off-street parking for the existing structure, which is a three-family, as well as the proposed modified structure. So all parking would be contained off the street. We need a frontage waiver for lot one on the plan because the required frontage in the S zoning district is a hundred feet. Mr. Tolman's plan shows eighty-seven feet in that regard. And we also need a lot coverage waiver because with this pavement to accommodate the off-street parking, we exceed the lot coverage requirement in the zoning district. And then lastly, we're seeking a special permit for the aisle width to traverse westerly from Belmont Street into the site. The aisle is not compliant with the twenty-two-foot requirement contained in the bylaw. As I've submitted in my paperwork, I think the hardship associated with this property is the existence of the structures hugging the northerly boundary line, as well as the condition of the barn, which Mr. Tetral tends to improve significantly, which I think will be a great addition to the neighborhood and create necessary units in the city of Fall River. I don't think this really derogates from the intent of the bylaw. It's all residential use. And as you can see from Mr. Tolman's plan, for example, on High Street, immediately to the west, you see three three-families adjoining this property, and that is what is proposed in this petition. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Tolman can answer questions, Mr. Tetral can answer questions relative to the proposal before the board.
You might just take a second and show the audience the picture or the rendering.
Yeah. Like this? I didn't see it. I don't have it. It looks like the animal.
I'm lying, I guess I do. Okay, members of the board, any questions?
Attorney Salino, what is the height of the existing barn? And is it getting taller?
I don't think it's intended to get taller, but I need to defer to Mr. Tolman on the height of it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I believe there's a second level to it. If I had to guess, it would probably be about twenty-five feet, plus or minus. There is like a haywire.
The rendering looks like it's a lot bigger than twenty-five, so.
Yeah.
I've got a picture. In my phone. I think it's about twenty-nine feet high to thirty-three.
Is the barn being torn down?
No. Right, you don't intend to tear it down.
No, we're going to take, we're going to fix the foundation.
Yeah, so the intent is not to tear it down, the intent is to modify the existing structure.
And change the roof height or not, do you know?
I don't know, I don't know, the, it might be a foot shorter or a foot taller, something like that. It's probably about twenty-nine feet high as it sits right now. It's tall enough as it is when we showed the architect to put up two floors in there, fine. So give or take a foot or two, less or more.
Okay, and the existing lot coverage is?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Well, twenty-six.
Twenty-six with the overall.
Twenty-six is how it exists now as one single lot.
I see, okay, yeah, yeah.
The single lot, do we have that broken down, lot one and lot? Okay, it goes to eighty-two?
Correct.
If we do the subdivision, okay.
So with that being said, similar to the last petition, it would be my recommendation that all impervious surfaces again be infiltrated. All, all buildings, all asphalt.
Is that the intent, any way you're turning, Salino?
No. Send the water to the ground.
Yeah.
That's fine, there's no objections.
Or use bars asphalt to help, or use pavers, again, those are tools that the engineer has at his exposure to help with drainage and lot coverage. But if it's to be pigment, then it needs to be infiltrated.
And so it's a total of six, you're looking for a total of six units on that three and three. Do we have a bed count?
You have two one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom.
Is that in the barn?
In the barn?
In the barn.
In the main house?
In the main house upstairs, there are two one-bedrooms on the top floor, and that middle one could be either a five or a four-bedroom. It's a lot of rooms in there.
Okay.
That house.
So what was that, the three-family as well?
It's either a four or a five on the first two levels is one unit. On the third floor is two units, is two one-bedroom units.
Those exist, just to be clear.
No, no, I get that, but he, I don't know.
In the barn?
He didn't four out of that, no. The three-family dwelling, you said on the first two floors?
Is one apartment?
It's one apartment.
All right, so it's a townhouse.
Yeah, you can look at it that way, yes.
And there's five bedrooms in that?
It's four bedrooms, but one of them has like a connected room, I don't think it's for a closet.
The lower level was utilized as a single-family home.
Right, and then you still, there's two one-bedrooms on the third floor?
On the third floor.
Okay, all right.
Dan, anything else?
No, parking exceeds the requirements. The lot, lot two will be a single-family home that'll completely conform, so. And my main concern would be raising the barn structures significantly and how that would affect the abutting properties. And then what stormwater is taken care of. This is a single-family district, but there are many non-conforming uses around it.
And the special permit for the reduction in the aisle width?
So twenty-two foot aisle width is required?
Right.
It's eighteen feet, huh?
It's eighteen, okay, that's what I was looking for.
Eighteen for the coming in off of Belmont, and then where it tees off, that is twenty-two in the back.
Twenty-two, okay.
Because we do have parking, there's one parking spot on the east side with remaining on the west, so we do have parking on both sides, so that is twenty-two.
And you would want to consider that the law is not to be further simplified and spread upon a three-family, which I don't think is the intention, but you know.
Yeah, no objection.
No objection.
Okay, before I go to the audience, I have a letter in support from the Fall River, City of Fall River Historical Commission regarding seventy-two Belmont Carriage House reconstruction, to whom it concerned, the Fall River Historical Commission received a request from Tetral Real Estate LLC seeking a letter of support and recognition and reconstruction of the carriage house located on premises of seventy-two Belmont. Commission met with Brian Corley, representative applicant, at this meeting in September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The property is historically known as the Chauncey Sears House, built in eighteen ninety-three from designs by local architects Charles Farnham, located in the Highlands National Registered District from nineteen seventy-seven, historical building survey conducted in the Preservation Partnership. It goes on with that. The property is significant, not just in style, but through its connection to the original owner, Chauncey Sears. Sears was a prominent stonemason, was the owner of the quarry, and it goes on into much more historical fact. Please, please accept this letter in support from the Fall River Historical Commission regarding the proposed rebuilding of the carriage house to support three residential units. This request is a letter of support and was approved by the Historical Commission on its meeting on Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And if anybody wants to look at the historical nature of this letter, it's available. Anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ken Fialda, I'm the executive vice president of Bristol County EDC. I'm here before you tonight to support the application that is before you tonight. For those of us that know that neighborhood and have lived in Fall River, you know, most of them out all of our lives, we understand, you know, the historical value of that property as well as the abutting properties throughout that neighborhood. We also understand that this property in question has been let go for a number of years, it's been overgrown, and it's been run down, and it's abut the Fall River Odd Association, which is a very prominent building within the neighborhood itself. Yeah, Mr. Tetral has an undisputable record of rehabbing existing properties throughout the city in a fine, professional manner, and I suspect that the work that will be done on these properties will be not only in keeping with his professional standards, but also something that the abutting property owners would appreciate in terms of the aesthetic quality of the property, the cleanliness of the property, as well as the ongoing maintenance of the property. It is for those reasons and also the reason that we need additional housing in the city that I'm here before you tonight to speak in favor of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Yes.
Hi, Richard May, Sainting two forty-three French. I live just on the north side of that property I bought the barn, and I've spoken to Mr. Tetral, and I have the understanding, and he's doing a marvelous job. I'm not concerned with the property at all. But is the barn, when it gets reconstructed, is that going to be the existing footprint? Or is the footprint will be larger?
Just more intention, chairman.
Exactly the same.
Yeah, and that was my understanding, and I have no questions there. And I understand the barn is going to be approximately the same height. My backyard abuts that barn, so.
I can see you're right, there's a patio there that separates a concrete pad. Looks like it separates you from the.
That was the horse, the storage area previously.
Yeah, it looks, on the plan, I'm sorry, we usually have a. We usually have the monitors available tonight, but we're having technical problems here, so we don't have the laptop to put up the, if you want to see a copy of the plan, we have them available. But the, it looks like the footprint is exactly where it is currently.
Exactly, I haven't seen the drawings, so that's why I'm asking.
Would you like to come up and take a look? Copy here, there's a copy right there, there's a photo. Would you like to come up and take a look?
Your house is right here. That's me here. Again, there's the concrete pad in this, this me, which is, which is fine. And the height's going to remain pretty much the same. They're doing a remarkable job on the home, I think it's an asset, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming out. And anyone else in favor? Anyone opposed?
Yes.
Okay, we have a few people here. We'll start, ma'am, if you want to give your name and address again.
My name's Diana Madara, I'm from two seventy-four Prospect Street. And I haven't heard anything about lot two yet, and I do understand from someone at the Historic Commission that they may potentially be moving the house on the corner of Highland Avenue and Prospect Street to that empty lot, which belongs to Charlton right now. Could you tell me if that's true?
I haven't discussed that with anybody in Charlton.
From somebody from the Historic Commission who said they discussed it with you.
They did mention it, but I haven't discussed it any further than that.
Lot two is to be a completely conforming parcel and has no relief associated with it. So if they could theoretically move a house and meet the requirements for setback, lot coverage and all of those things, that would be perfectly legal to do. If they needed any other relief, then they would need to come back here again for specific relief to that lot.
I just prepared something, you've answered a lot of my questions, but I just want to read it. And again, you have done a wonderful job on the house. The house was falling apart, and I do appreciate that. But it is the Chauncey Sears mansion. It is one of the finest examples of Queen Anne architecture in the city, and it is important for its cultural and architectural values to the neighborhood. The property has been on the Fall River Register of Historic Significance since February sixteenth of nineteen eighty-four. The historic gardens have been demolished, which does indicate some disregard for historic preservation, even though they weren't elected for many years. That the next part I'm going to skip, but. And you did say you're going to have parking for the original lot. What about, what about the second lot? What is the intent of the second lot? Do you intend to keep that lot or do you intend to sell that lot?
We haven't decided at this point. It's a conforming lot, so meaning he could sell it to a builder who could build a house on it that would have to conform to the city's requirements relative to setback and so on.
And what does conforming mean? Does that mean it would actually be a single-family home or does that mean it could be a multi?
In this, in this district, conforming means it would be a single-family home. It would have a hundred feet of frontage, which it does. It would have at least twelve thousand square feet of area, which it does. And it would have a front building setback of twenty-five feet, a side setback of fifteen, and a rear setback of twenty-five.
And would have to provide two or three parking spaces.
Thank you.
Okay, Tetral Real Estate, I feel the motivation for buying that property was strictly profit-driven, and making requests for all these variances is justifiable in the context of, is. Let me just read it from the beginning. Tetral Real Estate motivations are seen as profit-driven, making the request for variances less justifiable in the context of preserving historical integrity. Also, a hardship is usually defined as a peculiar condition of the land or structure that would create hardship for the owner if limited relief is not granted. The circumstances of the owner cannot form the basis of the hardship, such as overbuilding to acquire additional revenue. Increased density and parking issues, well, that may be non, the parking issues may not be, but, again, we don't know about the second lot, with the parking issues, it could be on the second lot. The variances, I feel, should be for hardship of valid reasons and not profit. These variances would impact the neighboring property's comfort and privacy, especially to those of us with pools in the summertime. Overdevelopment will alter the character of the block as well as affecting the property values of neighbors and potentially increasing our property taxes as well. It is important to adhere to ordinances to protect long-term residents, such as my house, such as myself, I've been in my home for forty years. The historical significance adds weight to the argument against granting variances and permits as the community values the preservation of such historically important properties and the lack of genuine hardship in the decision-making process. Also, mass Commonwealth law generally disfavors variances, and the zoning board is not required to make rigorous findings of fact when denying a variance. However, they are required to make rigorous findings of fact when granting variance. In conclusion, I request that you deny the variances and the special permits.
Thank you.
I have a second.
Good job. Sir?
My name is Nathaniel Finnsness, I own the property of ninety-seven Belmont Street, across Belmont to the north of Mr. Tetral's property. I agree that the work he's done already to the house on the street has been commendable from the condition it was in before. I didn't see, or I guess I have a question, of how many parking spaces are being proposed for these two three-family buildings?
Twelve.
It looks like fourteen.
Fourteen, I see fourteen.
All right.
So more than two, more than two spaces per unit, which is the requirement.
Yeah, I see that. I, that portion of Belmont Street between Prospect and French is very narrow. It should actually be a one-way, and we have significant parking problems there already. I feel that this type of a development in that area would impact parking in the street. I also, I went up against your board several years ago to try to add one apartment to my property, and I was denied because it's a single-family zoning area. So my argument is that building two, three families on this lot is way beyond single-family zoning.
Building one three-family.
Right, okay, but having two, three families on one lot. I don't disagree with the request to build a single-family on that separate lot and divide the lots, but I'm against redevelopment of that, that part of the back.
Can I answer that? What is that single family, somebody else?
We have to ask more questions to the chair when it's your turn to speak.
One second, I'll get to you in one minute, I'm just trying to work my way around. Thank you very much, sir. Your name, please?
I'm Paul Karen, I live on seventy-one Belmont Street, directly across the street. And there is a big problem with parking, you know, depends how many, you know, residents are going to be there. There could be three people living in the house for this very, very. There could be three people living in the house for this very, very poor parking there now. You have the Art Association, you have the Little Theater, you have the Geekin' Is Home, and the hospital next door. Parking is very, very, very tough there.
Did, did you gentlemen have an opportunity to see the plan at all, to see what the parking looks like? What's going on that lot there? Yeah, okay.
But it's really, really tough parking there now. And the street is very, very busy where you're going to have a lot, a lot of traffic.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am, will you just stand up, please, and give your name and address?
I'm Tyler Factory. I actually bought the whole side of the second lot, 290 Prospect Street. So the second lot would be my major problem because I already have a ranch house and a pool and three kids. So building a house that's taller than my house is gonna absolutely be inside my pool, basically, which is a problem, but we'll talk about that in a minute. My first problem is that now we are adding three more families, like all my neighbors have said. And what if that person who buys that one lot or who decides to build on that one lot chooses to apply for variance for a multifamily? So what happens now? We used to live in a very quiet, very quiet neighborhood where everybody knew everybody, everybody respected everybody. The kids grew up safely and one of the very few places in whatever, like, like that, with that kind of charm, that kind of peace. And I feel that this is overcrowding, overwhelming. And what happens to my property value? On a ranch, a single-family house with a pool, what happens when I have seven families next to me? What happens to the residents who live there, who have taken care of their properties, have taken care of that neighborhood? When there's a theater, we can't even get the kids out of the car because there's no place to park. The Little Red Theater takes all the parking. I applied a few years ago in front of your zoning board as well for a license just to get a wholesale dealer in my house, which wouldn't change anything. You would never see a car. The only thing that would change, I would be working from my house with an address at my house rather than renting an office. And it was denied because it's supposed to be a single-family. It was just, nothing was gonna change, I already work from home. But you guys denied it just to not give me that variance. So now we are having all these variances and changing the life of people who planned on staying there in that neighborhood. How many variances are we gonna, if the laws were made to be applied, if we're gonna keep breaking them? So if he's gonna, no problem, you're gonna give him that, then I'm gonna have to bring my value of my property up by applying for the same things. Then what happens to the neighborhood?
So understand, no one is breaking the law. The zoning board of appeals is the legal process to do something other than what the law allows. And if the argument is given to support that, then the board has the ability to grant that relief. No, no one is breaking a law.
No, not breaking the law, it's changing the law, changing, changing what's in place.
We're waiving what's, what the requirements are.
Right, waiving their requirements.
By the specific circumstances.
But why would the requirements put in there?
Because they're, they're created as a blanket for the development of an area. However, in those same laws, in those same regulations, there are provisions to come before this board and propose an ad hoc business, adding a fourth unit to a three. Everyone has the right to come to this board and go through this process and have a butters come, like you are. Thank you all for coming in and giving comment for or against because that helps the board in understanding the neighborhood's concerns. So we do thank you for coming out for that and offering your opinions.
I don't know. That's my other problem. What if the second lot is gonna be turned into a multifamily? This is a disaster to my family. Like, where are we gonna go?
It, it can be a condition of this board that that lot cannot come back before the zoning board appeals and that it is to be only a single-family dwelling. That condition can be placed on that lot if, if the board decides to grant. They can put any condition. They can require that you put a blue tree on the left-hand corner of the lot, anything they can throw. It has to be a condition and it needs to be...
I just want to explain that that area is the buffer between me and all those.
Understand completely.
So that area is the buffer between my family, my pool that existed when we bought this house and poured so much hard work into it to bring it back to life because it was in a very bad state when we bought it. So, and we've spent our life here, my kids were born here and now they're going to high school here. And I'm not planning on moving. But if this is gonna happen, then I'm gonna have to weigh my options. And I, this is not really what we've been for.
So, so just understand, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name, but when, when we look at the legal application of requesting a variance and specific to a singular parcel, there are a number of different types of hardships to point to, like, for instance, an existing historic structure to be preserved, an existing home that needs to be preserved. And although financial gain for profit is not an acceptable reason for the granting of a variance, however, if the board looks at the fact that we are renovating and preserving a historic structure that costs X amount of dollars, it is appropriate to apply the need for additional funding on this parcel to help pay for that renovation. And if that additional funding is through the creation of these other units, then that's something that the board can legally grant. So it's very specific to every specific parcel. This one has, happens to have very unique structures in need of repair.
And that second lot that is being created is completely conforming in every way, so they could...
That is, but the barn is not.
Correct, that's why they're here, to, to the variance on that. But just, just making a point, as she was talking about addition, adding multiple units to that lot behind her, that's a, right now, as it stands, someone can build a single-family house tomorrow because of the way that the lot is shaped and conforming. If they want to build something else, yes, they would have to come in front of us to ask for that. But, so, just to make that point for your back, talking about your back property, how your pool and all that. Right now, there's, it's a single, it could be, if we approve this, it would be a single-family buildable lot.
But you are able to see how close to everything, to the privacy and everything is there. So if it goes two-story up, then that's it, we cannot use our pool. At all. I mean, who knows who's gonna live there? Who knows? Maybe it's some, somebody who's gonna watch my kids swim. I don't know. I mean, this is a big problem, I, I don't know.
Gentlemen, I have another question for your comment, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll second it.
I won't, I won't say.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that if that Lot Two is created, it's a, it's a conforming lot.
Yes.
But in order to do it, Lot One becomes non-conforming, is that correct?
Correct, correct, yes.
It's already not, well, it's non-conforming now with its shape, the, being close to the...
Right, but if one's done that property now is conforming.
Correct.
Yes.
You, you, you split these up, that means Lot One is now non-conforming because of frontage length, okay?
Mr. Frank, could I have a moment and rebuttal to all these various points, please?
I'm gonna get to you, yeah. I just want to see if there's anyone else in the audience that still has an opposition?
My name is Lynn Graves. I own a house at 645 Main Street. That barn is about six feet from my fence. Just overcrowding. It'd kill us. Okay.
I understand.
Daniel Madiras, again, 274 Prospect Street. They, they did mention that there was previous, previous ordinance in 2016. David Mello was granted the division of the law. But from what I understand from the registry and deeds, that David Mello was granted it for financial hardship. And I also understand that financial hardship is not usually grounds to grant an ordinance. It's usually, it has to do with the non-conformity of the land, slope of the land or something like that. So I don't see any of these issues. And I know that you're saying that he's bought a property that needs a lot of repair. And so, yes, the income that he would get from all these rental properties would help him. But he knew that when he bought the property, he knew that. And he knew he was gonna have to go for all these variances. And it's, it's just, it's, there's too many variances on one lot to even make it reasonable.
To change these existing...
It's, it's just...
My, after hearing that, my premonition is that Attorney Salina is gonna probably address the majority of those issues in his next statement here, as far as the variance and the hardship and so on. Are there any other parties that are against? No, okay.
Thank you. Attorney Salina. So in rebuttal, starting in order from Ms. Madiras, obviously you read into the record, Mr. Chairman for the evening, that there's a letter of support from the Historical Commission. So this has clearly been vetted by the Historical Commission and they've given a letter, two-page letter in support of the project. So I think it's a little bit disingenuous to say that it's against the historical character of the neighborhood when the commission that's charged with overseeing that supports the project. Next, we've heard from two previous applicants who were denied. And I'd submit to you that creates a little bit of a motive to come out here tonight and oppose my client. Next, the parking concerns, I think, are well addressed and thought out by the petition and the plan. There's no question that that street is narrow. There's no question with the Art Association and the Theater, it's tight. And that's why the plan is the way it is, to support the parking for the site. Next, Mr. Tetral, I feel like is being assailed a little bit, so I want to put the following in the record. He's not an out-of-town developer. He lives on Highland Avenue. He was born here, grew up on Charles Street and has spent many, many millions of dollars in the city of Fall River. So is he a businessman trying to make money? Certainly. Does he do an excellent job on his properties? Absolutely. The board knows that we've been before you on many occasions, most recently on the former nursing home property on the corner of Stanley and Hanover. And he did a great job with that property. He took a dilapidated structure, like that which is before you, and he turned it into something that's viable and valuable and that the neighbors are happy with. And I've spoken to the neighbors, so I can affirm to that. So I'd submit to you that we do have a valid hardship here. The structures are placed in an odd location on the lot hugging the North Lee boundary line. That's the way it's pled. There's no question that the creation does create a non-conformity with respect to frontage, which I said in my opening argument and put in my petition. We can't control, nor can we prognosticate or forecast what a potential owner of Lot Two is going to do someday. All we can submit to the board is that it's a conforming lot and any application to build on that lot would have to conform with the city's regulations relative to building. That's all we can do. I mean, these theories about second floors and people looking at children, I mean, we've gone far afield of what's in front of the board. What's in front of the board is a petition seeking zoning relief. That's it. So I want to highlight those points because sometimes in these meetings, I understand open meeting and I understand everyone has a chance to talk, but I feel like it gets off topic oftentimes. So what's before the board is not potential two-story houses that may impact the butters, but rather what's in front of the board is a petition to create two lots in the manner presented. Thank you.
Attorney Salina, would you contemplate a deed restriction limiting Lot Two to a single-family home?
Yes.
Can I rebuttal the rebuttal?
No.
It's my right.
You have your three minutes.
Does anyone?
Minute two.
What is it, ma'am? You, you're looking to rebut something that...
No, I'm just, I would like to say that I'm not here because my application was denied. When I was looking this up, I came across the definition of the zoning board of being a board that would strike a balance between each property owner's rights and the public's right to a safe, secure and orderly neighborhood.
We're, we're very aware of the ordinance.
Yes, and this is how I learned about it, so I'm only asking for my rights, that's all.
Understand, understand. And that's why we have these meetings and, and you all are notified to come here because you're butters to hear what's going on. Thank you. Okay. No, that's, that's it, ma'am. Members of the board, do we have any other questions or any other comments or concern? Okay. Can we get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, you have multiple votes.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, we have...
You have variances for everything, you have...
There's one variance, right, for all...
For all of the...
The exceptions.
Everything except the aisle.
Variance for aisle width, right?
No, aisle width is a special permit.
For aisle width and everything else is a special one. So if you don't vote on the variance positively, you don't have to vote on the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, in the time I've been here, this is one of the more difficult ones. Both sides, I've listened to. I really do think, however, that the concerns of the neighbors are legitimate ones. That being said, I would make a motion to deny.
Motion denied. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dan DePere. Okay, members of the board? Alexis?
No.
Jim?
No.
Yes.
Yes, yes, Dana, yes. And Chairman Frank, no. So it's three to two, it's not in favor. We have to have another motion if anyone is interested in moving forward because it did not pass. Has to be the super majority.
So the motion is denied and we don't have to vote on the special permit? The question is, a variance has been denied.
Someone could make a motion.
Someone could make a motion to grant, but...
The motion to deny did not pass.
The motion to deny was denied.
However, if someone wants to make a motion to approve...
The three to two.
And it's the same three to two.
Three to two.
Yes.
If someone wants to make that motion.
If someone wants to make that.
I'll make the motion just to finalize the action.
Do we have a second?
This is, this is motion to approve?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No, no, Dan DePere, no. Chairman Frank, yes.
Motion's denied.
Motion's denied. It didn't carry.
Okay, item number six. We have... Fall River Plate Two LLC, care of attorney Peter Salina, 1703 through 1729 Pleasant Street, MAP J19, Lot 55.
Good evening for the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant, Fall River Plate Romanuville Two LLC. My client owns the property located at...
Excuse me, can you take all conversations outside, please? Thank you.
My client owns the property located at 1703-1729 Pleasant Street. Most folks know this property, at least by sight. In Fall River vernacular, it'd be at the top of Pleasant Street on the corner of Northeastern Avenue. The building encapsulates mostly the entire lot. It's currently a mixed-use building. My client acquired the property in 2023. He's having a lot of trouble with the commercial units and specifically renting them out, finding a use for the commercial units on the first floor. Therefore, I petition this matter as a special permit seeking to convert all but one of the existing commercial, existing commercial units on the first floor to one-bedroom apartments. My client is looking for six one-bedroom apartments. For the record, they would be ADA-accessible first-floor apartments. Again, it's pled as a special permit, both as to the units and as to the use, and seeking a waiver of parking. I'd submit to the board that when you're balancing the equities and considering what's more detrimental to the neighborhood, the commercial use as currently, as it currently sits there, the parking requirements are very significant. Obviously, you know, they're balanced between employee parking, customer parking and loading. And if we go down to a one-bedroom apartment, I'd submit to you that the waivers of parking are not more detrimental than what could be there by right in a commercial scenario. So I think it's a pretty simple petition relative to the last one. The client is here. Mr. Tallman's the engineer on the project, so we can answer any specific questions the board might have. But again, this is not a variance, it's a special permit seeking the use for six one-bedroom units on the first floor as well as a special permit for waiver of parking requirements in a BL district.
What is the unit count above?
Do you know that, Jeff? Yeah, for the record, this is Omer Grunau. He is the principal of the LLC that owns it and the testimony is 10. There's currently 10 units upstairs.
10 above and six, we want to put six below, so we're 16 units?
Correct.
10, are they single?
What's the bedroom count, Omer?
Two bedrooms, a few cylinders and two two-bedrooms.
That is not changing, correct?
No. And, and that, and I should say that. That's why I didn't mention it in the petition, because that's not, none of that is changing on any... It's just strictly, this petition is limited to the north side of the building facing Pleasant Street for the commercial units.
Attorney Salina, you said that on the commercial units now, they're not being operated, is that correct?
There's one that has a sheer genius barber shop in it, but the gentleman's had a, a lot of difficulty putting business in there. There's not enough parking, the street's congested, et cetera.
So there's one business operating?
Uh, yes, right, just the sheer genius. So it'd be the, if you're standing in Pleasant Street, it'd be all the way on the right, the most westerly side of the bit, what's currently operated.
At the corner of Raymond, that's where it's operated.
That's correct, yes. Yeah, that's correct. And that's the sheer genius, which is a franchise there on Slade Street. There's several throughout the city.
So if you don't own the building, there used to be a Quinale Hot Dog place in there? So if you don't own the building, there used to be a Quinale Hot Dog place in there? Is it theater company, I think?
It was a tattoo place.
Tattoo place is actually on the corner of Eastern Avenue. So it would wrap around that street level after the first unit at Raymond, that would be converted to one-bedroom units?
Yes.
Six ones?
Yes.
So currently on site, you have ten parking places in the back?
Uh, yes.
Well, after we striping, we'll be able to get to twelve, correct? Six, four, and two, we'll be able to get to twelve.
Yes.
Right?
Oh, okay, I see the other two. Okay, sorry.
Well, currently now, it's kind of the Wild West back there.
Yeah.
Provisions have been made for dumpsters, passout areas for making sure that everybody can turn around.
Yes. Okay, members of the board, any other questions?
I just have one, and it's not really a condition, but is there any plan to do any renovation of the aesthetics of the outside of the building? As far as re-signing or...
So all the storefront glasses are gonna go away, and it's gonna be?
Windows and doors.
Windows and doors. Any other questions from the board? Members of the audience, anyone here in favor of the petition? Anyone opposed? Okay. Members of the board, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, that building has been run down for quite some time, and as a bifurcated request, I would move that it, this request is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dan Dupierre. Okay, on the motion, Alex?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And Chairman Frank, yes. Motion's granted. Thank you. On the special permit, sorry. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. On the motion?
Yes.
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 Yes. Chairman Frank, yes. Now it's Grant. Thank you.
Item number seven, GRK Investment Trust, care of attorney Peter Salino, twelve ninety-eight and thirteen hundred Rodman Street, map F zero nine, lot ninety-five forty-eight. Attorney Salina?
Yes, good evening, Peter Salino, for the record, on behalf of the trust that owns the property. This site was unequivocally dilapidated. My client recently acquired the property. On the site were two vacant multifamily dwellings, and the lot of land on the corner of Rodman and Omen is just a big wide-open vacant lot consisting of tires, mattresses, and other general refuse. So at the time of the closing, the city was owed over fifty thousand dollars in back fees and taxes, which were paid as part of the closing, and now the client is going forward with a petition to develop the site. The proposal includes dividing the site into four lots. The, for the record, historically, there are four tax lots there, albeit not in this configuration. And the proposal here would be to keep the existing multifamily structures on what is labeled as Lot One, and then build a three-family structure on each of lots, Lot Two, Three, and Four, which front on Omen Street. In terms of the relief requested, we've requested that the board grant a variance reinstituting the use of the front home labeled as twelve ninety-eight Rodman Street to a six-family dwelling, thirteen hundred Rodman Street as a three-family dwelling. We've done that because this is an R-four zoning district, and those buildings have been vacant for more than two years. In addition, my client's seeking to build, again, those three three-family dwellings. We've provided sufficient off-street parking for the three-family dwellings, but we are short on parking for the six and the three. So that's why you see there's nine parking spaces associated with that. So the waivers before you, just to make sure I'm being clear, is we're looking to revive the former use of the six-family dwelling and the three-family dwelling shown on Lot One. We're looking for a variance relative to the lot area on the creation of these lots. We need waivers for lot frontage in this area, lot coverage, and side yard setback. And we've also pled for a special permit as a result of the travel aisle not being wide enough, and a special permit for lack of parking as it relates to the use on Lot One. In terms of the merits of the argument that there's a six-family there, or there was a six-family there. So my client has taken Mr. Tolman to the property today, and there are six meter sockets there. In addition, the city's assessor card indicates, it's mainly classified as an apartment four through eight. And then finally, Mr. Tolman has indicated that the house that's there, this twelve ninety-eight Rodman, albeit in horrible condition, has a center stairwell, and there are six apartments in the building, you know, fanning out left and right of the stairwell. So we think we've provided sufficient evidence to support the fact that that was, in fact, a six-family dwelling, and we're asking that it be, that use be revived. Happy to take any specific questions, or if Mr. Tolman has anything to add to the application or the petition. I know we will have opposition, and we'll address that accordingly when we get to that point in the presentation.
I want to say the two bedrooms in the six. The three, I didn't go inside the three, I don't know what they are there. But I believe the six...
The assessor's card listed as six bedrooms, three baths, so, but it also listed as a three, three-unit building, and I'll offhand that in a minute. As far as bedroom counts go, in the building, it says that there are six bedrooms.
And that's the front building of the...
Yes, the front. And the back building has total of nine bedrooms, according to the assessor's card, which is the only document we have.
The front building is listed as the six family, right?
Correct.
The address is twelve ninety-eight, for clarity.
It's labeled as a six family on their plan. It's listed as a three family in the assessor records. I'll explain to that when you ask my opinion.
You have photos?
Eight is a zoning classification for the use of the property, which is a total of six units, so that falls between four and eight. But again, I'll wait till you call on it.
You have the six meters?
Yes.
Is that here? Are you presenting that?
Yeah, I'd like to submit it.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions?
Mark, here from Dan again.
All right, so first, and this helps attorney, you know, but he alluded to the request through a variance of reinstituting the past use of the property. That's actually a special permit under eighty-six four twenty-eight, where the board by special permit can reinstate a previously nonconforming use that has since been, since in operation. The denial of paperwork from the building inspector and my subsequent conversations with him and the assessor offers that this is a three-family building, which we could pass along the building card for that, that building.
I think we have that.
The only legal record of that structure is a three family, and that's with the determination of the zoning enforcement official as well. Now, if the applicant would like to oppose that decision by the zoning board, by the zoning enforcement officer, he would have to appeal that decision, separate filing than what's here. So his assertion is it's a three-family. The assessor's is three-family, not is, was, because it hasn't been occupied in over two years. So my opinion is, and the building inspector's, is that the only relief that you can grant with regards to eighty-six four twenty-eight is to reinstitute the previous three-family use, which is what the assessor assesses. That's for that aspect of the proposal, which I think you really need to get to before you contemplate anything else. And the building inspector is aware of the meters and did not sway his opinion in any form or fashion.
I do have some photos that I'd like to present as well. These are photos that I took today, just showing the inside of the...
Would these give it to the building inspector at any point?
No, I just, I just took these like, like four o'clock or so. That is the interior division wall, the original plaster, all was here, plaster, there is division panel clearly going through the middle of the house. This is the side entrance that faces Omen Street to that six-family, and this is the staircase. So when you go in that entrance, you're in a staircase, and you have a door to your right and a door to your left, and then you go up the staircase in a common area. So you would have to basically walk through a stairwell. If, if each floor was its own unit, you would have to walk through a common area to get from one side to the other. I don't see how this, I mean, it's been in this condition for many years, just given the condition of the plaster, location of the stairway, I don't know where the confusion comes from in the classification.
Did anybody speak to the assessor regarding their assessment of the UNICO?
No.
No.
There's clearly a division wall that goes from the first floor all the way up through the third. And again, you would typically see in a case like this, a staircase would not be in the center of the structure. It'd be towards the front, towards the back if the entire floor was to be a single-family unit.
We're to the point where we are, in order to go forward on the special permit, we are limited to only returning it back to what it is?
What the zoning enforcement official has determined it to be.
Correct.
So that's the only thing that, that you can go on. You can't go by my opinion, because I haven't walked through the building. I'm just relaying his opinions and the assessor's records for the property. If the applicant would like the ability to table and have that conversation with the building inspector, I would hope they would have done that by now.
Yeah, and so the applicant's willing to relent and concede to a three-family determination. Okay. So the amended, do we, would we have to refa, repost?
No, because you're reducing the...
And if necessary, I'm happy to make an oral motion to amend, to change the request, to reinstitute the use as a three-family dwelling stipulating to the decision or the writings of the building official of City Fall River.
Okay. So that's your motion?
Yes.
So we're now looking at a three and a three, and then three threes?
Correct. Do we want to understand, everyone have that? Everybody have any other questions on that?
You can vote on just that special permit. You want to deal with that reinstatement of nonconforming use. You can take input regarding just those matters, deal with that, close that out. Because then that, that decision is locked in. In the event that other league is not granted, he now has the ability to go back and restore those buildings to a three and a three. So I would like him to at least close out that decision for him, for the outcome.
So take the special permit initially?
By itself, yeah. And take, and take commentary only to that specific part of the petition. The other part of the petition, we'll have a discussion once we get there, as far as anybody in favor or in opposition.
I think that muddies the waters.
No, it doesn't. No, because it's a completely different vote.
It's one project, though.
Also want to be clear, too, there'd be two special permits, right? For a waiver of parking.
Oh, we haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay.
You have one special permit.
Yep, use.
Reinstituting the use of those two structures for what they were. If you want to let them roll them all in as one?
Meaning as one discussion and vote?
Yeah, exactly. That's up to you. But I, if I was sitting in your chair, I would have asked for separate votes, but I won't tell you how to do your job.
Right now, this is one, this is one project altogether, and I...
Yeah, you don't have to allow the separation of votes.
We can keep it all together, and I'm gonna have, because all, the audience isn't gonna be able to differentiate what we're talking about here, so. All right, no other, no other questions from the board? To the audience, anyone in favor of this petition?
Yes.
Yes.
Ken Fajola, good evening, Ken Fajola, the vice president of the, as you can see I'm here today in favor of this petition, primarily based upon the fact that this particular piece of property has been an eyesore and a decadent piece of property located along the Rodman Street, Omen Street vicinity. The reinvestment in this property will be generating new residential opportunities for people that are needing residential accommodations within the city. The project that is currently proposed does encompass and accommodate all off-street, parking off-street for the units that are being proposed in two-to-one fashion, so it shouldn't have any negative impact around the surrounding areas. And I think by virtue of the rehab and re-establishment of new units in this, in this honest particular location, not only will it be an improvement to the lot itself, but also could have substantial improvements to the evaluations of other properties already by virtue of rehabbing a decadent lot.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Anyone else opposed?
Yes. May I sit?
Yes, just your name for the board, please.
My name is Louis A. Melon, five seven seven Grinnell Street. I'm a disabled American veteran of Vietnam, Arab. And I think this proposal is detrimental to the neighborhood. I live on a corner of Grinnell and Rodman. I've seen at least ten accidents because too much traffic, no, no place to park cars. My fence has been knocked down three times. Fortunately, insurance paid for it.
Mr. Melon, just again, where are you located?
Five seven seven Grinnell Street, one single-family home.
It'd be north of the site, Mr. Agia.
Your direct of butter?
Yes.
Yes.
You own that property?
I do.
Did you?
It has listed as an ALCA?
It's my wife.
It's on a D.
Her name.
I am.
Did you see the plant?
Oh, I got it here. So you know, this, this six-family has never been a six-family. I've been there for almost twenty years.
We've already got past that, that's why I wanted to bring it up here.
I have an issue with it because it was condemned by the city three times, that I know of. The last I heard was, I got the reports from the building department, with all these actions, the mayor called me and told me the house was gonna be knocked down in February. They went out for bids to knock the house down. I got the copies of the bids here. Eventually, someone bought, and I'm glad the gentleman bought the house because that, something had to be done with that property.
Yes.
But it's three feet away, that, the one that was saying was six-family, which was never a six-family. If I put six mirrors in my basement, it doesn't become a six-family, it's still a one-family.
Correct.
That house burned down thirty years ago. Two weeks ago, I was overseas. I got a phone call with pictures, they went into my property, knocked my fence down in order to cut their trees, and made a mess of my yard, my lawn, and then just threw gravel at it. So we're not starting in the right foot to begin with. Furthermore, three, three families on Omen Street, every single house on Omen Street is a single-family home. And all of a sudden, they want to build three threes on a R-four, I believe that is R-four zone, it's unacceptable. So I hope the board denies it because it's detrimental to the neighborhood. There is no parking spaces, not enough for eighteen units you want, and now I understand it's fifteen, but nevertheless, there's not enough parking, as it is. We have problems. I've had to call the police because people from other streets are parking in front of my house because there's no parking around. Now they want to build three fam, none of those three-family homes that they want to build has enough frontage or enough distance from the neighbor next door, and therefore it should not be allowed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you are aware, you did properly state that it's fifteen instead of eighteen, you understood that that's not gonna be requested as a six, now it's gonna be requested as a three?
Nevertheless, that, the house shouldn't be there. The house is officially condemned, it should be knocked down.
Thank you.
And it's three feet away from my property. The only reason I built that was because the city, the building department told me that house was coming down, so I built a brand-new house there because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else opposed?
Jose Cuna, thirty-five of Rodman Street.
Yes, ready to press street, yep.
I think, I thought about mirrors on the house, that's not true, because I lived there for over forty years, I never see one person live in that house. That house was a warehouse for junk that they pick from the street, and no conditions, that's now a house, just as a roof. The house next, and they think about building housing project, eighteen families there. You see the people over there, you got one project housing in front of our house.
In a zone one, one family house?
They need for that, at least thirty-two, thirty-six parking space out the street. I don't know, I think that's, if they're talking about one, the single house, okay, but three of four new ones, two old ones, I think is too much, my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed? Yes.
James Cunha, 32 Omen Street. I think that it's a three, it's sold for two, one family, and three deckers on Omen, three three-deckers on Omen, it's too much. Parking right now is terrible, because you've got people from Rodman Street parking on Omen Street, and I think it's a little too much for that corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
David Santos, 605 Grinnell Street, 1274 Rodman.
Yes.
Like they said, the neighborhood, I've been there forty-plus years, and since I've been there, at least forty single, forty homes have went up. The neighborhood's congested, Walmart went up, McDonald's, traffic, it sounds like the Bronx at night with police cars and all of that, you know? It's horrible, and it's not the same neighborhood I grew up in as a kid, you can walk around that neighborhood, even car doors open. Now, you're going to jam eighteen more families in there? It lives in a block of a corner that has a hair salon, insurance agency, a cafe, St. John's Athletic Club. Parking is horrible. I have to park in my mom's driveway half a block away to get my truck off the street, you know, because my family has cars and they use a two-car driveway. It's just, sometimes I have to park a block away. The neighborhood is just flooded right now. It's unbelievable, the traffic, the accidents at this corner, at least fifteen a year. I mean, since I've been there, I want to say at least fifteen in the last three years. You know, cars going through his fence, hitting my wall, just the traffic is unbelievable, especially since Walmart, McDonald's, and the forty single families I went up since I was a kid. I mean, it's jamming in there. And it used to be a quiet neighborhood, and now you want to put a condo-type building over there? I can see a couple of single families, you know, if you want to do that, but to jam eighteen families, fifteen families in a twelve-thousand-square-foot lot? You know, what's a minimum lot in a city, five thousand square feet? Six thousand?
Depends on the district.
Saying that's a single family, you're going to put three buildings, four buildings on a twelve-thousand-square-foot lot?
The request is three.
That's just my complaint, you know, it's just, it's just jamming in there, that's all.
Anyone else opposed? Yes, yes.
Just want to renovate, that house is, I'm sorry, the end of an ALCA, 577 Grinnell Street.
Thank you.
That house is like, not even three feet from our house, that first house, the one that was condemned many years ago. You go on to our deck, you can see right into my house, if you look out the window. It will be absolutely no privacy whatsoever. I can't even sit on a deck if I wanted to, because the windows are so close to where my deck is, my sliders, you can see right into my house. And when they chopped down the trees, all the privacy went away. At least we had some privacy with the trees. The trees were gone, there was absolutely no privacy whatsoever. And putting three family in there, there will be no privacy. You would have to have a ten-foot fence to get some privacy. I can see, maybe knock the house down, move it down more, just give our property some privacy.
Okay, anyone else? Sir?
My name is Andrew McCall, I live at 595 Grinnell Street. I mean, just to fill off everyone else, I've lived at 595 Grinnell Street for about fifteen years now, and just the parking on Grinnell Street and Rodman Street, Omen Street, it's overwhelming. You know, you have all the people from Rodman Street come and park on Grinnell, and it's, we can't find places to park our cars. Especially when it snows, all those people have to, when they have the parking bans, they have, everyone has to move their cars off the main road and onto these side streets. So parking's a problem, and especially on Omen Street, there are no three-family houses, they're all single-family houses.
Anyone else opposed?
May I speak in rebuttal, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to point out for the board's edification, that the lots known as 595 and 577 Grinnell, both who have spoken here tonight, were created pursuant to a variance of this board. That variance is dated January 2nd, 2003, and that variance was required because of substandard lots. Second, the house at 577 Grinnell was built, obviously, as we've heard through testimony, while the structure of 1298 Rodman was there. So they built it knowing it was there and pursuant to a variance. And I understand there's a representation, that somebody said it was going to be knocked down, and so on and so forth, but the fact remains that the lot was created pursuant to a variance, and it was built knowing that structure was there. And ultimately, even if it was knocked down, as long as my client left a structural member up, he could build it in that same exact location. So I think that's important, when you're weighing what's more detrimental, because there's some realities to this petition that are sort of getting overshadowed. In terms of the arguments relative to parking, the lots proposed as numbers two, three, and four, all provide sufficient off-street parking per-city requirements for what is being proposed. So that's an important highlight. Several people just said that there's this a single-family neighborhood, which is inaccurate, it's an R4 zoning district, which is a two-family zoning district. And there are two families, there are three families on Rodman Street, right across the street from the site. So I want to point that out as well. And then relative to the lot and the comments surrounding the lot, and the condition of the lot, and the trees, when my client acquired the property, he had Levex Tree Service from Swansea go there and cut the trees, he was doing that to prepare the site for development and for betterment of the site. There was no intention to interfere with anybody's privacy, it was an overgrown jungle with mattresses and tires, so I think that's important to bring out as well. Nothing further.
Can I add about that?
Sir, go ahead.
There was mattresses, there was no trees in my yard, my yard is perfect, was perfect. They dismantled my aluminum fence up front without my permission, brought heavy equipment in there to cut the trees next door, trespassing. My yard had nothing to do with it. And I know I was not the owner who did it, but there was people working for him, therefore he's responsible, not me.
Okay.
And yes, I didn't, I didn't build a house there, because City Hall had condemned that place, and it was supposed to be knocked down, and that's a fact, it's a record.
Okay.
And it's been, it's been, the same thing is done at least twice since, since I've been there, condemned. The city spent seventeen thousand dollars cleaning the house, the one that was supposed to be six families, quote-unquote.
Well.
And it was never knocked down.
Okay, sure. What we're looking at now is somebody who's coming before the board to renovate the property, improve the property. Anyone else opposed? Members of the board? Oh, I'm sorry, yep, I do have a, we have an email. I can't really tell if it's in favor. It's from Rosemarie Paul. As you probably are aware, a contractor is attempting to put three more tenement or apartment houses at 13 Rodman Street. Just so you know, I live at 54 Omen for seventy-seven years. Before I could remember, until the sixties, it was used, I used to cut the grass, and it was used to scrap metal over there. That said, ground is likely contaminated. Our area has a great deal of some type of limestone, which is not easy to get out of the ground. Our home is in, neighborhood foundations are at least four to five feet high because of it. Also, the fact that there are rats and many vermin that should be exterminated before any work be done on the building. We would like to, we would like your committee to take all the information under consideration before issuing a response. Thank you. That's the same, yeah, just to duplicate that. So that, opposition, I would say. Okay, members of the board, any further questions, comments? Dan?
I have nothing else, I have, just I wanted to relay the building inspector's opinion as well.
Very good. Okay, so the petition that we are moving forward on right now is for a three in the front, a three in the back, and three threes across the Rodman-Omen Street side with a total of twelve, eighteen, twenty-seven parking places total?
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't we have to put the delineation first, that six that they requested not be permitted, and that it, that the most could be the three?
Yes, that.
We have multiple motions, multiple votes.
Right, yeah. So the first is a special permit, that is to reinstate the expired use, and that will be bifurcated whether or not it's more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. Do we have a motion on that?
See, I don't know how we can restore a multi-family use of two properties, a six unit, when that's not what was previously approved.
The attorney has withdrawn that portion of the application and is presenting it as a three.
Yeah, he's withdrawn the six, so it's a three and a three.
So.
Instead of a nine. It's not a six and a three, it's a three and a three, is what he's requesting, what the request is.
Right, just to clarify that. And also, I'd also like, if there's going to be discussion, I'd like to hear the discussion, because I may make a motion to table, so if you're, if you're going to go right to a motion, I need to speak to my client. I thought there would be some discussion. So there's going to be no discussion?
We're there. I mean, there was no motion, there was no. We'll give you two minutes. Thank you. Is this a good time for a five-minute break, Mr. Sadi?
Anybody?
Yeah, we'll take a, we'll take a five-minute.
Yes, Mr. Frank, petitioner makes a motion to table this petition to the November meeting. I'm happy to pay the fee tomorrow, I don't have a blank check with me and fill out the appropriate form.
I have a form.
Okay. Going to do that, fill out the form tomorrow.
Can you bring us the check tomorrow?
Okay, do we have?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant them.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask if we had time for the butters to be notified, or will this serve as their notification? This is the notification.
Next meeting is November 21st.
Okay. All right. So what is being presented is the petitioner is tabling the matter until, requesting to table the matter until next month's meeting. So do we have a motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
Second?
Motion saved, yes.
Motion, okay. And on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes, across the board.
Thank you.
Okay, so the petition is postponed until next month, tableed until next month's meeting. You, this is serving as your notice that you, if you want to come back for the next month's meeting, you probably will not receive another notification in the mail, because you're in a butter, and moving on to the next one. Thank you.
Now, we're up to seven.
No, no, for next one. Yeah, no, we're going to eight now, right? Correct, you confused me. Yeah, item number eight, JRBL Homes LLC, care of attorney Peter Salino. Nope, Tom Kelloran's coming up, and he's an all-star.
All right, this petition is relative to 24 Kennedy Street in Fall River. The property is owned by JRBL Homes LLC. This gentleman, could you state your name for the record?
Jofra Rios.
And this gentleman is the proprietor of the LLC that owns the property. The petition before you relates to an existing structure that was also significantly dilapidated when my client purchased it. The proposal includes converting the existing two-family structure into a three-family structure. As far as the waivers in front of you, the first would be a variance for use. This is an R4 zoning district, so three-family would not be allowed by right. The second is for lot coverage. Because of the parking that is proposed and the asphalt, we need a lot of coverage waiver. And finally, a special permit for aisle width. As you can see from Mr. Tullman's plan, the travel aisle is only sixteen feet, as opposed to the required twenty-two. I've submitted to you in my petition that the hardship associated with this site is clearly the irregular shape of the lot. The westerly side of the lot, as you can see, is very oddly configured, and the single, the three-family that fronts on Stafford Road effectively hugs this building. I don't know how that lot line ever came about, but nevertheless, it's odd. But we submit to you that we can provide the off-street parking necessary. The gentleman's underway in terms of construction and done a very nice job so far, and we'd ask the board for the relief granted. Happy to answer any questions relative to the petition or the plan.
So again, attorney Salino, the special permit is just for the width?
Yes, the width of the travel aisle running from Kennedy Street north.
Okay, so, so lot coverage is going up to sixty?
Yes.
And you're providing six?
Six off-street. Currently, there's just a small driveway on Kennedy Street.
But there is lawn remaining?
There would be lawn on the northwest corner.
Yeah, okay. Members of the board, any questions? Dan, any comments?
It's my understanding that there are no exterior modifications to this building? There's no roof changing, there's no dormers, there's no nothing?
No. The building footprint stays exactly the same, is that correct?
The roof stays the same, there's no dormers to make more space inside the third floor?
No.
No, okay. And then, my only other comment, similarly, when we're asking for relief for lot coverage, is that all impervious surfaces be infiltrated into the ground? That's it. And the special permit for parking is the minimum by the width of that, of that drive aisle.
So that would, the infiltration system would be reviewed under site plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at a variance and a special permit, correct?
Yes.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Okay, members of the board?
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Looking for a motion on, well, we have a variance for use and lot coverage?
Or discuss, or no questions?
Uh-huh.
Or discussion or questions, if you're not ready for a motion yet?
But I'm, what I'm wondering, special permit first, variance first?
Yeah.
There's no need for the special permit, you don't want a variance.
Right. So as I said, we have variance for use and lot coverage, and then we also have a special permit for parking and the lot, the width. Okay, so the first will be on the variance. Do we have a motion on the variance?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the variance for use and lot coverage.
Specific conditions?
Condition on the site plan review on the infiltration system for the building, that it, all impervious surfaces.
And also no exterior modifications.
Well, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Alexis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman, yes. Okay, and then the special permit for parking waiver, do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I find that it would not be substantially more detrimental to the area to waive the, or to grant the parking, special permit, and I move that we grant that permit.
Okay, so that's both, it's the bifurcated, here anybody made the motion, that it will be both the not more detrimental and approving of the motion in one motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are you noticing that I'm confused?
Okay, second. Alexis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes, Dan? Yes. And Chairman Frank, yes. Okay, so it's granted, thank you very much. And Chairman Frank, yes. Okay, so it's granted. Thank you very much. Okay, item number nine, Ernest Costa Jr. and Robert Costa, care of attorney Peter Salino, zero and ninety-nine Jones Street, map T zero-six, lots thirty-eight and forty.
Okay, the record's tired, but my name's Peter Salino, and I'm a lawyer, five fifty Locust Street, Fall River. I represent the applicants, Mr. and Mr. Costa. The property consists of a single-family dwelling. It's a long rectangular lot. The proposal, I think, is pretty simple. There's an existing foundation on the ground that's planned to be removed, and we're looking to establish a lot line between the single-family house, known as ninety-nine Jones, and a new overly conforming lot labeled Lot Two. The issue here would be that this is a G zoning district that allows for five thousand square foot lots. If we are not able to get the property line where it needs to be, then we're off by two point five feet in terms of the required setback on the right-hand or the easterly side of the single-family structure. So the requirement in the district is a ten-foot side yard setback. The client is trying to create Lot Two, which again exceeds the requirements in the district by double in all directions. So the the simple waiver before the board is that two-point-five-foot side yard waiver as shown on Mr. Gortat's plan.
So the foundation's being removed?
There's a foundation in the rear, which is there.
The dash foundation that straddles the line.
Yeah.
How the existing house is staying?
The existing ninety-nine is staying.
Is staying. Any questions for the board? Dan?
No, I wish they were all like this.
This is a variance. Anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Yes, sir.
Can we ask what the plan is, once the variance is granted?
Yes.
Say your name for the board?
I'm sorry, Mike Mello, sixty-six Jones Street.
There's a copy of the plan right there, the the printout.
It doesn't tell them what it's gonna be, though.
And the answer is resale.
Resale?
Yeah.
Okay, now is he gonna resell it? Is he gonna divide it into different lots, resell it?
It could be further divided, Mike, because the lot requirements in that district are only five thousand square feet.
Okay, because the rumor is that he's not gonna divide it, and he wants to put an apartment complex, apartment house there.
He can't put an apartment.
Okay, that's what we, that's what we're worried about, because there's not enough parking.
Yeah, no. The only thing before the board is this right here is short by two-point-five.
Where the house straddles the zero?
Exactly.
So this he can sell?
Correct.
Which has the garage?
And he's gonna keep those? He will keep this existing lot with the garage as one?
I can't tell you that definitively.
Keep in mind, that's not, the only thing before the board is the setback. That's the only thing before the board.
Okay, and we would be notified if anything else comes before?
If it's non-conforming.
If you're in a butter, are you, what was the address again?
Across the street.
Mike was across the street.
If you are in a butter, just make sure. Did you get notified of this hearing? If you did, then you're on the list.
Okay.
Now, that would only be if a variance is required.
Correct. Correct. If it's conforming?
Then they can just go ahead and build.
Yes, correct.
But is this property? Can you build multi-family on it?
I don't, I think yes, but my zoning codes are my benefit.
Is there a limit as to how many?
It is, three.
It's a G district.
Three?
Three under the general zoning district.
Okay.
But to build, to go three, you would need eight thousand square feet of land.
Okay, now, if they did build three, would they require parking?
Yes, two spaces per unit.
Two spaces per unit?
If they couldn't meet that requirement, they would need to come here. If in order to meet that requirement, the lot coverage is too much, they would need to come here. So anything that they that they couldn't follow in the zoning by law would require them to cease their lives. Excuse me, the the square footage for a three-family was? Would be eight thousand. Five thousand square feet for the first unit, fifteen hundred square feet for each additional unit for a maximum of three.
And this lot with the house is gonna be how many?
Seventeen.
That's eleven. Seventeen thousand, seven forty-eight, and this one's ten thousand.
Technically, uphill, he could do a three-family. Lot number two could be two, one families?
Right.
Two single families, or one three-family. Two singles, that's that neighborhood up there.
But they would, that would require parking also?
Absolutely, yeah.
Two off, you need two off.
Yeah, Jones Street is a very busy street, and right now, it can take a long time just to get down the street if there are cars, because it's really the gateway to the Highlands. So many people are driving up to get
Part of this petition is also that they're adding two off-street parking spaces to the existing house to get more cars off the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Members of the board? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the variance as requested.
Seconded. Motion and seconded. On the motion, Alexis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Frank, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate the indulgence. Sorry I had so many. Like you said, Tommy Kelloran's much more articulate than me.
Tom appreciates that.
Yeah. You'll enjoy his presentation tonight.
We're getting Tommy two hours in, though.
I gotta take another break.
Oh, no, go to break.
All right, item number ten, Hyde Development LLC, care of attorney Tom Kelloran, zero South Beacon Street, map H zero-six, lot thirteen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, attorney Thomas Kelloran, office is at three fifty North Main Street in Fall River, Massachusetts. I represent the applicant, Hyde Development LLC. This particular application pertains to vacant property on South Beacon Street. The lot is seventy-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet. It's currently a vacant parcel of land. It's partially paved over. There's frontage of two-hundred-and-seventy-three feet along South Beacon Street and roughly four-hundred-and-forty-five feet along, looks like Center Street. What's before you this evening is a request for a special permit to allow for the construction of seven townhouse-style buildings, each building containing three units, for a total of twenty-one units. Each unit would have three bedrooms, and is proposed to have two and a half bathrooms. We're in a commercial mill district, which allows by special permit development of twenty-plus units. So we're not before this board this evening asking for any kind of variance relief. We also ask for a special permit with regard to some of the parking that is along South Beacon Street as it's within the ten-foot setback area from South Beacon Street. So we would ask for a special permit in that regard, and also with regard to some of the landscaping requirements, because we have over twenty-five parking spaces. With regard to the parking spaces, we wanted to make sure that we were able to comply with the bylaws requirements of two parking spaces per unit. And in fact, what's shown on this plan is there's fifty proposed spaces, and there's a requirement for forty-two proposed spaces. So again, ultimately, what we're looking for tonight is a special permit, again, because we're providing for more than twenty units in a commercial mill district, and a special permit with regard to some of the parking requirements. With me tonight is Jeff Tolman, who's the site engineer on the project. So either one of us will be happy to address any questions or concerns of the board.
Third time's the charm.
I think this was only due twice.
Twice? All right. Question is, this is gonna be a butting that South Beacon, what, the the Duro complex that's being?
Correct.
Eventually renovated and redone. And then the new building, now the new building that, I know it's not part of this project, but how doesn't show on this plan. Maybe it does.
Are you speaking of the parcel to the south that was just permitted?
Is that the nineteen units, I believe?
Yeah.
So I can offer that currently this site is permitted for a self-storage facility, you know, with all outdoors and steel panel garages that encompasses about the same area. It's been through conservation permitting, could could pull a builder permit at any point in time. Over this last year, you know, through the Duro Mill, proposed renovation of the four hundred units across South Beacon, and the most recent approval for Atlantic West LLC to the parcel to the south for townhouse-style development, the character of this neighborhood is taking shape as a residential use. That's why the applicant is then now switching gears to come in with this new proposal to be more in keeping with what's happening around him. And we're actually happy to see this proposal rather than a self-storage facility, for sure. The release request is all by special permit and is minimum. They do have site plan review permitting, conservation commission permitting, so a number of permits to to receive after this that deal with Stonewater primarily, but
Although I wasn't involved with the the proposed self-storage, my understanding is that's allowed as a matter of right. Obviously, we had to go through site plan approval
Site plan review and conservation.
Right, and conservation commission. But but Ms. Aguirre is correct. I think the applicant or the owner of the property is is taking a look at what's going on in the surrounding neighborhood and has seen a shift from more of a commercial or business-type nature to residential, and that's why they're they're looking at pivoting potentially with regard to this site.
No variance, special permit, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's it. Anything else, Dan?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, I keep flipping back and forth. My confusion is my orientation. I think I'm going the wrong way.
Oh, on the, on your, looking at the plan or where you're scrolling?
The both. Looking at the plan, it's going this way.
Correct.
Correct? Over here is where the building, the new building for this one.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, all right. I know where I'm at now. I was thinking it was coming this way, and I'm like, that's gonna impede on that one, and then, okay. Very good. Anyone in the audience in favor of this petition?
Yes. For the record, I'm Ken Fiole, executive vice president of Russell County, U.C. I'm here tonight to support this special permit request that's before you. As attorney Kelloran stated, as well as Mr. Aguirre, there's been a lot of change in the state of it in terms of residential use. You know, I guess for better or for worse, depending on the side of the fence you are, we believe it to be for better. Clearly, you know, the recently permitted project for Atlantic West, the permitted project for the reconversion of and rehabilitation of the Duro Mill for residential purposes, obviously, this piece is sort of in the middle, it sort of sticks out. And having this converted for residential use, I think, completes the overall picture there in terms of a piece of the puzzle, and that you're essentially creating more residential home opportunities for residents of the city, and it also enhances an area that, quite frankly, is probably in need of significant investment. So between all three projects, to the extent that this one's approved by the board, I think what you're gonna see is, you know, the development of a new neighborhood down there, which is gonna have a beneficial impact on the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as increased property values throughout the area. So based upon that, I'm hoping that the board sees fit to approve this special permit request. Thank you.
Ken, is there any concern on the part of economic development? I know that there is a housing shortage still in the in the geographic area.
Yeah.
But that we're eliminating all of our commercial space, or a large number of our acreage that is going.
So, yeah, so there's always a little bit of a concern, right? So, but, you know, fortunately, again, if you look at the, a lot of the mills just lend themselves for manufacturing purposes these days because they multi, multi-story, everyone wants single-story, high ceilings, concrete floors, and loading docks, right? So the mills themselves are not very conducive for rehab for manufacturing purposes, and that's why we've been repurposing them for residential use. Obviously, we lose a little tax base when it goes from commercial to residential. However, in this instance, we're actually increasing some tax base because we're gonna have a great evaluation of the parcel as a result of of the the proposed use. Overall, I think, you know, that's that's an issue, but you know, the fact of matters for is running out of land.
Yeah.
We don't have much land available for further development, and I think, you know, you might see some repurposing of other properties for your manufacturing purposes. If the manufacturing sector actually turns around, we're more of a service-based economy now. You know, Jimmy, you can recall back in the nineteen-nineties, we had more than twenty-one thousand manufacturing jobs in the city. Today, we have less than four thousand. So we've lost that, not to any fault to Fall River.
Yeah.
But just trade policies and other types of policy. So we haven't diversified the economy, and as part of that diversification effort, it's the reuse of existing buildings for different types of uses. And with now with our industrial park primarily full, our technology park full, our commerce park full.
Yeah.
We gotta identify other sources in other areas where we can expand to accommodate these proposed uses. But this is a little piece, it's not really
Oh, yeah, I'm not really directing it towards this one, but just a concept in in general.
Absolutely. We still got some land along the waterfront, the Shell Site, which is about sixty acres that could be used, again, potentially for some sort of commercial or industrial use. But again, it's just like anything else, a lot of people don't like to see those types of uses in an area where they become, it's quiet, right? So you introduce another use, even though maybe a lot by zoning sometimes that's problematic as well. But that's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Anyone opposed? Members of the board, do we have a motion?
Just to assure people that I'm not opposed, I move that we grant the
It's a special permit, so the
All right, yeah, I find that it is not substantially more detrimental to the area, and that I move that we grant the special permit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the motion, Alexis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Chairman Frank, yes. Granted. Item number eleven.
Thank you very much.
Adelson Dos Santos, care of attorney Thomas P. Kelloran, five thirty-three Hanover Street, map M eighteen, lot sixteen.
Evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, attorney Thomas Kelloran, office is at three fifty North Main Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. I represent the applicant, Adelson Dos Santos, who is here this evening. We're appearing before you tonight with regard to a pre-existing, non-conforming, two-family structure in a single-family zoning district. The property at issue is about seventy-eight hundred square feet and has sixty feet of frontage along Hanover Street. Again, it's an existing building, and it's been utilized as a two-family structure. It's three stories in height, currently the third floor, third story is being utilized for storage by Mr. Dos Santos, who also resides at the property on the first floor. What we're seeking tonight is a special permit to convert the, excuse me, the pre-existing, non-conforming, two-family to a three-family residence, converting the third floor to another apartment. There would be no exterior changes to the building. I did hear Mr. Aguirre, I think, inquire on earlier petition about the addition of dormers. There'll be no stairwells or anything like that on the exterior of the property. So what you see today at the property in terms of the structure would be the same as if this, if the board saw fit to grant the requested special permit. We do provide for six off-street parking spaces. There are two in the existing carriage house slash garage, and then four spaces that back up against each other, right up along the existing asphalt walkway. We do need a special permit with regard to the parking aisle width. So again, there's two special permits effectively that we're we're seeking, one to convert the structure from a two-family to a three-family, and then for the parking aisle width along the driveway. But again, we were we're sensitive to try to make sure certain that we were able to comply with the the parking requirements per the board's zoning, per the city zoning ordinance, to make sure that we provided six parking spaces off-street. Mr. Dos Santos did receive a communication from one of his neighbors, a Gene Powers, who lives at five seventeen Hanover Street. If the board would allow, I'd like to just submit that into the record. She's indicating that she does not oppose the requested application.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll certainly turn this over to the board at this time, and if there are any questions or comments, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Dan? I have nothing. There's there's no extension of the structure, there's no expansion of lot coverage, so there's restriping the existing asphalt, we need the parking requirements. I don't have no issue with it.
Which is what's being proposed, the restriping to meet the parking requirements of the existing asphalt?
Correct.
All right, with that, looks like it's in character with the neighborhood. We have three families all around it. All the houses are the same in that block. They look the same. I hope there's any other comments to be made, but do we have a motion?
Bifurcated. Did you ask the audience yet?
Yeah. Did I? I didn't?
No.
No, I didn't. I apologize.
But there is.
Thank you. See, I need somebody to check on it. Anyone in the audience in favor?
I haven't.
It's you, your house. Anyone opposed? No, okay. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, it's the bifurcated request, is that correct?
It, it is.
You could lump them all in if you chose. One more one.
Yes.
Okay, so I would make the motion that we want the, everything into one special permit approval. I move approval of the special permit.
Second. Second, okay. All those in favor?
We just gotta find that it's not more substantially.
Not substantially, but you.
Yeah.
As one of the.
Yeah, but it didn't say they.
On the motion?
Yes.
Allison? Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Frank, yes?
Great, thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 12, review and discuss zoning board appeals, rules and regulations pertaining to the number of submissions except last month. Are we?
Yes, we have, I've garnered some information, and the issue that I had with it is that, and Ricky and I talked about it recently, is that most zoning boards appeal meet multiple times in a month. So when they cap.
Motion to deny?
So I think, I think we should uniquely look upon ourselves as how many do we feel comfortable with new petitions?
Yes.
Taking in at a time. You tell me what you think that number is, whether it's 10, 12, 15, whatever it is, and then let me go look into how do we make that happen? What, what type of vote? What, what, what path do we need to follow to make sure that we're following the law correctly by limiting that? Because I don't want to infringe on someone's legal right. And I want to make sure that us capping it, that we have the ability to do that.
Right. I think tonight is a good representation of what upper limits should be. I mean, we're at 11 here.
Eighteen now.
No, 12.
That was with 11 new petitions.
12, yeah.
And one carryover.
Dan, but I mean, is it within, within the board's right to set the number?
That's what, so that I will go investigate.
All right, so really, there's no purpose of discussion?
No, there is. Because if we have, whatever the ability, however we need to do it, I want to know what that number is.
My, my opinion is that the planning department and your staff, you and your staff, know the amount of work and the time involved in processing the applications. And so I don't think we're in a position to tell you how many you should process because we don't know the, the time commitments.
But it's also, but it's, it's that, so that's one part of it. But then it's also to make sure that we, we can give everybody the attention that each petition deserves.
Yeah.
Right.
And that we don't get tired after three hours.
Well, who's tired?
We did something like this a couple of years ago.
I know we did, yeah.
And it comes down to the complexity of the issue.
So it was eight eighteen, we really only had one complex that, that went on. Do I think 12 is probably the number? Probably about, right? 12 new petitions.
Yeah.
And then that gives us room for however many that are tabled or whatever else.
But the complexity of them.
Changes.
Varies.
Yeah.
You know, you could have eight quick ones and one bad one.
But you don't want to need it unredited, right?
Right.
And then find out. So, so we have to have a limit somewhere.
Dan, have we got the ability where, like, we, we knew the number of new petitions that are going to be on next month's?
Which is a quiet meeting.
Yeah, but, but let's say it was a higher.
Just one. One more petition, so we only get five new ones.
Let's say it was a high number. Could we have granted them the extension, but not to next month?
Yes.
To, but to the month after? Because we're already full?
Correct.
Okay, I, I think that's a control factor we need to examine.
As long as it's to a time certain that both parties agree to, you can put it on whatever meeting, whatever you choose.
That could get messy.
Why not?
Well, and if they say 12, but we're only gonna cap it at 15 and have three carryover, and then three carryover.
Well, what he's saying is, suppose we find out we have 12. And you don't want to allow people to table, like tonight. Like next, next month, we have five.
Oh, for next month, next year.
Suppose we had somebody that wants to table tonight. You would have to, on the first table, make the determination to that. Anything that gets tabled is going to the following. But we have to now understand, when we get to that meeting, you can't limit, you're still stuck with the 12 new ones that could come in. So you could have allowed six to be tabled, 12 new ones, and now you're at 18, so.
Well, can't we go by total number? It, it, I mean.
No. We already know how many you have for next month.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I mean, it's kind of, I'm just saying if we have a full month every month.
So, so, so tonight, we knew we have five for next month.
Right.
Suppose all 11 wanted to table. Okay, so you can't, you can't decide halfway through the meeting, sorry, nobody else. So it would have to be, what meeting, what meeting are these?
I would have to say, yeah.
It's all or nothing.
Right.
Because everybody has to be treated the same way. The order that they come in and are presented to you can't have any bearing on.
How really?
So you think you're comfortable personally, Dan, going from 15 to 12, max?
Yeah, yeah, or leaving it at 15, you know, but.
I think that's excessive. 15 is excessive. I mean, there have been nights, I remember we stayed here till 11:00 AM, or PM.
I know.
I mean, that's.
I used to try to talk quick.
Well, I mean, if we, are you looking for a vote of the board?
No, just, just a poll of, you want to reduce it from the 15?
I think, well, I'm comfortable with your.
And I'll come back to you next month with what is that process? And we'll, we'll decide if we want.
All right, so personally, I'm comfortable with your request or your opinion.